Hello, everyone. Welcome to UC Berkeley's public hearing to provide comments on the draft EIR for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Kyle Gibson, the Director of Communications for UC Berkeley Capital Strategies. Capital Strategies brings planning, design, real estate, and construction services to the UC Berkeley campus. We are architects and landscape architects, planners, engineers, and construction specialists, and administrative personnel all working together to serve the campus community. For today's public hearing, I'm joined by Senior Planner Shraddha Navali Patil from Capital Strategies' Physical and Environmental Planning Department. As we begin, I want to clarify that a public hearing is not a question-and-answer session. Rather, it is a forum for the lead agency, in this case UC Berkeley, to receive public input on a proposed project. The procedures for tonight's public hearing to provide comments on the draft EIR for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project are as follows. After a brief presentation that provides an overview of the proposed project and an overview of the draft environmental impact report, we will then receive public comments. There will be a time limit of two minutes for all public comments. And all comments received tonight will become part of the public record and responded to in writing in the final environmental impact report. In addition to comments received tonight, all comments received by the deadline in the notice of availability will also become part of the public record. The deadline to submit comments is January 29, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Comments can be submitted to us in writing by emailing planning@berkeley.edu or by US mail to the address that Shraddha will provide during tonight's presentation. There is no limit to the length of written comments submitted to us by email or US mail. However, they must be received by the January 29, 5:00 p.m. deadline. Additionally, the public is welcomed to view and download the draft EIR posted in its entirety on the Capital Strategies website. Now, I'd like to introduce Shraddha to give a brief presentation about the proposed Cal softball field renovation project and the draft environmental impact report. Shraddha?
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you all for joining us this evening. My name is Shraddha Navali Patil, and I'm going to be presenting the Cal softball field renovation project and the draft EIR. Okay, so the draft EIR is a public document that discloses the environmental impact analysis and conclusions related to the proposed project. And it is prepared pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. And this draft EIR is circulated for review and comment on the environmental analysis. As you already know, the university has released a draft environmental impact report on December 13, 2023, for a 45-day public review period. And this is an online hearing for that draft EIR. So I'm going to introduce the three parts of this online hearing. It starts with an overview of the proposed project, followed by an overview of the CEQUAS summary of the impacts and the mitigation measures as analyzed in the draft EIR, and then finally followed by public comments. No questions will be answered tonight, but all comments by the public will be included in the EIR along with a response to comments. I'd like to highlight that tonight is not the only time to provide comments. Comments will be due by 5:00 p.m. on January 29. So let's begin with the project overview. First and foremost, Chancellor Christ has made clear that gender equity is a crucial overarching value for UC Berkeley that demands equitable facilities for its women and men student athletes. In addition, the campus must also maintain compliance with Title IX, which supports and enforces that very same value. Presently, the current Cal softball field is existing field home for the UC Berkeley Intercollegiate Athletics Women's Softball Program. The existing field does not meet Title IX requirements and is not National Collegiate Athletic Association (NCA) compliant. So UC Berkeley proposes to renovate and improve this existing Cal softball field to preserve and upgrade this field to meet modern safety and competition standards for the IA's women's softball program, and also support campus compliance with Title IX through the provision of equitable athletic facilities for male and female student athletes. I'd like to point out that this project is the renovation of the existing softball field and that the university has been working on the project since 2018. The university is engaged with stakeholders since the first town hall meeting on the project in 2018, and the university will continue to provide information regarding the project through the stakeholder engagement meetings with interested neighborhood leaders and City of Berkeley, as well as information via the Capital Strategies website. This project will significantly improve the existing competition and training facility for the intercollegiate athletics women's softball team. So here are two graphics, two maps. The graphic on the left shows the regional location of the proposed project, and it is located in the City of Berkeley. The graphic on the right shows the project location within the context of UC Berkeley campus and its land use zone. It is part of the land use zone as marked here, which is Hill Campus West. Here are the images of the existing softball field. Image on the left shows the Witter parking lot, and also the portable bleachers are shown here that accommodate the varying number of spectators for the season. Image on the right here shows the existing softball field with permanent existing seating and the dense wooded landscape which is in the background. Here is the existing site of the Cal softball field. I'm going to refer to this graphic on the north. Here is the Centennial Drive. And you can see my cursor. The black outline is the project boundary. The proposed project stays largely within the existing boundaries of the softball field. The total project site area is approximately three acres, and the existing site includes turf grass on the field. There's developed impervious surfaces as well as existing landscape. The surrounding uses include the Witter Rugby Field, which is directly to the west, and Strawberry Canyon Pool, and the Haas Clubhouse, which is to the west of the project site. The California Memorial Stadium is located at the terminus of Centennial Drive to the west, and immediately south and southwest of the project is a densely wooded area as well as the panoramic residential neighborhood. All the figures here that are viewed can be also viewed in detail in the draft EIR. So what is the proposed project? The project is to renovate, as I already mentioned, the existing softball field to meet modern safety and competition standards. The primary physical changes associated with the project would include the expanded playing field dimensions for the field for NCA, support structure that includes a press box, team locker rooms, improved training facilities, restrooms, and a ticket booth, as well as permanent additional spectator seats in place of temporary bleachers, which is the spectator concourse seating, competition-grade lights and public address system, access and bus stop improvements, reduction of parking spaces. The project would improve and remove approximately 85 parking spaces and retain about 25 parking spaces within the existing Witter lot, as well as there's landscape and entry plaza that is provided in the project. The use of the softball field would remain largely similar to the current uses, mainly providing additional spectator and player amenities and seating up to 1,511 seats, up from approximately 1,340 spectator seats that are under existing conditions. Here's a site plan on the right, and I'm going to refer to the site plan as I just provide some details about the project. So the softball field. The improved softball field is in the same location as the existing field and would remain oriented in a similar fashion. The outfield fences would be extended to 190 feet down to the right and left baseline and up to 220 feet to the center field to comply with NCA standards. The infield surface is going to be resurfaced with new fine-grained aggregate material, and the existing grass outfield would be replaced with synthetic turf. The main entrance of the project is located on the northwest corner of the site on Centennial Drive, and it is between the renovated softball field and the existing Witter Rugby Field. And this is also planned and designed to form a landscape entry plaza that serves as a gathering place. It provides a ticket booth, signage to the softball field, and direct access to those with special mobility needs. In terms of lighting, the existing lightings included four 50-foot towers. These would be replaced and upgraded by installing six towers, which are shown here in red, and these would illuminate the infield, outfield, bullpen, and the seating. The lighting is designed to concentrate light on the infield and the outfield and dissipate foot candles towards the edges of the field. It's important to note that the upgraded lighting is designed to focus the light more tightly on the field and limit the impact of light on locations that are adjacent to the field. All areas of public circulation would be compatible and have recessed lights angled downward to reduce the glare and would be compatible with the rustic character of the Hill Campus West. The renovated field would not use diesel backup generators for lighting or any other purposes. The project involves improvements to an existing bus stop area, which is located directly north of Centennial, and these improvements include new striping, signage, curbs, sidewalk, and asphalt paving. The demolition and construction of this project would occur this year and would last for approximately 13 months. Moving to the field level plan. Here, the softball field structure itself is approximately a 30,500-foot, square-foot two-story structure that houses the bullpen, the dugouts, the concourse, and the press box. Approximately about 22,000 square feet would be the ballpark spaces, including the bleachers, the bullpens, and the dugouts, and the enclosed spaces that you see in this field level plan. These include the locker rooms, lounges, training room, all which are actually tucked below the concourse seating. The proposed building will be tucked below the concourse and would be set back from the curb of Centennial Drive to accommodate the landscape treatment which is at the entrance and the remaining existing parking, which is in the Witter lot. The setback depth is going to vary along the building edges of the concourse and the press box. A new scoreboard would be added to this project with LED desk display, and this would be used for player headshots, statistics, and replays. The views of this scoreboard and these displays from the south would be screened out by the dense trees that are south of the project's site. Here's a concourse level plan. And this plan is basically to show you the two project components. One is the press box, and the second is the concourse. The press box is going to be built in the southwest corner of the site, which is adjacent to this new fan concourse that wraps around the field and basically includes the 1511 permanent seats. The top of the press box, which represents the tallest portion of the building, would be about 35 feet high, and the concourse itself would be about 20 feet high. Although views would be filtered through the surrounding trees, as currently the structure would be visible from Centennial Drive and the Canyon Road. Here's a photo simulation that shows you the entry of the proposed project, and this is Centennial Drive here. Here is another photo simulation. The view on the left is the photo simulation view from Mosswood showing the proposed project. And the view on the right is again the proposed project and a view from the Upper Jordan Trail. So the project objectives. As I've already mentioned, the fundamental purpose of this project is to provide an equitable facility for women's softball. And as such, here are the underlying objectives for this project. To support UC Berkeley's ongoing Title IX commitment to gender equity, to ensure that the women's softball field is in a location with walkable access to campus academic and athletic resources, to meet NCA design requirements, to improve the existing recreational facility at the Cal softball field to meet needs, and enhance the experience of the current student body and community, to upgrade the existing infrastructure that surrounds the field, including ADA access, sidewalks, transit stops, utilities in a cost-effective manner, and to prioritize renovation of existing recreational fields. This ensures adequate land remains available in the central campus for academic and research buildings. This also aligns with the Berkeley campus's wide land use objective to make the highest and best use of each site to employ limited land resources most efficiently and that, to the extent possible, prioritize utilization of infill or undeveloped sites or renovation of existing sites. And ultimately, the project will implement UC Berkeley's continuing best practices. UC Berkeley currently implements continuing best practices, CBPs, to ensure environmental impacts from development and ongoing UC Berkeley operations would be reduced and are avoided to the greatest extent possible. For this project, the CBPs would be implemented where applicable. Also, as part of the project, there is a wildfire protection plan that is included in the draft EIR in the appendix G of the draft EIR. Moving on to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, is the state's primary environmental protection law and requires public agencies such as UC Berkeley to evaluate a proposed project's potential physical effect on the environment, provide opportunities for public involvement and comment, and to prepare an EIR, which this project has done, for the potential to result in a significant impact. Where significant environmental impacts are identified, CEQA requires that impact to be avoided, minimized, reduced, or eliminated and compensated. I'd like to point out that CEQA does not dictate project approval or denial. So what is an environmental impact report? The environmental impact report is one of CEQA's mechanisms for identifying and disclosing potentially significant physical impacts of a project. It is an informational document that discloses information about the effects of a proposed project that could have on the environment. It identifies feasible mitigation measures for reducing or avoiding significant environmental effects, and it describes feasible alternatives to the proposed project. It must be certified along with the project approval. So we are in the 45-day draft EIR public review period, which is focusing on comments of the draft EIR and not on the input on the project merits. The public review period is from December 13 to January 29. The comments on the draft EIR will be received through January 29, 5:00 p.m. The final EIR is anticipated to be completed between February and April 2024, and the final EIR and the project approval are anticipated to be certified and approved in April of 2024. So here are the CEQA topics that have been addressed either in the initial study and have been addressed in the draft EIR. Topics in the left column here were addressed in the notice of preparation and the initial study when the NOP was published. And topics that were addressed that are addressed in the draft EIR will focus on these specific environmental resource sections: aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, noise, transportation, and wildfire. Now, each of these environmental resource sections, which I just described, are organized and analyzed with the following. There's an environmental setting which gives us a general overview of the physical environmental conditions related to the topic, such as aesthetics or bioresources, and henceforth. Regulatory framework applies to the federal, state, local laws and regulations that are relevant to each of these topics and the proposed project. Impacts and mitigation measures identifies the thresholds of significance that are used to evaluate whether an impact is considered significant or not. These are based on the standards derived from the appendix G of CEQA guidelines. So standards of significance are used to evaluate the impacts of the proposed project, and these are specific to each environmental resource topic. Per CEQA, a significant effect on the environment means substantial or potentially substantial adverse change in the environment. And for each of these impacts that will be described, the significance determinations are made, and these are no impact. This means that there's no potential that the proposed project could affect the resource at issue. A less than significant impact determination means that there is a potential for some limited impact on a resource, but that the implementation of the project would not result in a substantial or adverse change to the resource, and that there were no mitigation measures required. Less than significant with mitigation means this applies if there's a potential for a substantial adverse change and effect in accordance with the significant standard, but mitigation is available to reduce the impact to less than significant. And finally, significant and unavoidable impact. This determination applies to impacts that are significant and for which there appears to be no feasible mitigation available to substantially reduce the impact, and therefore the impact is significant and unavoidable. The draft EIR also evaluates cumulative impacts and as well as alternatives. And the following slides henceforth now will discuss the results of the impacts of each resource topic that were analyzed in the draft EIR. First is aesthetics. I'm not going to read out the whole slide, but to mainly show you that under aesthetics, scenic vistas, visual character, light and glare, and cumulative impacts, all are less than significant. In this analysis, the university also did a lighting analysis that was prepared by HLB Lighting Design, and this has been included in the draft EIR, and this informed the less than significant analysis. So to conclude, for aesthetic impacts for scenic vistas, visual character, light and glare, and cumulative, it is less than significant. The next topic is bioresources. And under the candidate-sensitive or special status species, the project would have a substantial adverse effect, either directly or through habitat modifications on any of these species that are identified as a candidate-sensitive or special status species. However, with the implementation measure of Bio-1, this would be a less than significant impact. The mitigation measure Bio-1 really requires a survey by a qualified biologist 14 days prior to any demolition or construction. The survey determines if the if the wood rat, if the San Francisco dusky-footed wood rat stick houses are any potential, potentially occupied or not. And also, the mitigation measure provides additional measures to implement if if the stick houses are occupied, what needs to be done. This slide has a summary of the mitigation measure, but the draft EIR has the full mitigation measure. But the implementation of this mitigation measure would leave this to be a less than significant analysis. So for the rest of the impacts for biological resources, which includes the repairing habitat or other sensitive natural communities, wetlands, resident or migratory fish and wildlife movement, and nature wildlife nursery sites, as well as cumulative impacts, all of them are less than significant. Impacts that are found to have less than significant impacts are because the proposed project would not exceed the significance criteria and also through compliance of UC Berkeley's continuing best practices, as well as the Bio-1 measure. Moving on to cultural and tribal cultural resources. Under cultural resources, built environment, historic resources, human remains, and cumulative impacts, all of them are less than significant. For archaeological resources, the proposed project may cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a unique archaeological resource or historical resources of an archaeological nature. However, UC Berkeley shall implement mitigation measure Cultural One, and this will reduce the impact to a less than significant impact with mitigation. Similarly, for tribal cultural resources, the project may result in a substantial adverse change to a tribal cultural resource. However, UC Berkeley shall implement the mitigation measure Cultural One, and this would reduce the impact to a less than significant impact with mitigation. Moving to noise. For temporary or permanent increase in ambient noise, the proposed project would generate a temporary increase in ambient noise specifically for construction noise. And for this, the campus has provided a mitigation measure. So with mitigation measure Noise 1 for construction noise that basically shall implement measures such as restrict demolition or construction activities and use of equipment for the time being, between hours of 8:00 and 5:00, construction equipment and vehicles will be fitted with efficient, well-maintained mufflers that reduce equipment noise emissions levels at the project site. The full mitigation measure is in the draft EIR, and I've not provided the entire one. But with the mitigation measure Noise 1, it would be still a significant unavoidable impact only for construction noise. For operational noise, based on the modeling results for the project, the operational noise would be less than significant. For excessive vibration impact and cumulative noise, it is a less than significant impact. Moving on to transportation. So in transportation, the proposed project may conflict. Actually, it would not conflict with a program, plan, ordinance, or policy addressing the circulation system, including transit, roadway, and bicycle facilities. But the proposed project would conflict with a program, plan, ordinance, or policy related to pedestrian facilities. And so in relation to that, this impact is potentially significant prior to mitigation for typical events and maximum events only. For this, the university has addressed it with a mitigation measure Transportation 1, TRA 1, and UC Berkeley shall implement measures to improve pedestrian safety and connectivity along stadium rimway, Centennial Drive, and portions of Canyon Road leading to the Cal softball field. And this is in order to facilitate safe ingress and ingress of spectators before and after typical and maximum events. Specific measures would be posted on the UC Berkeley's Intercollegiate Athletics website to provide spectators with several pedestrian travel routes to and from adjacent parking facilities. UC Berkeley should also monitor the implementation of the measures and will refine such measures when warranted. Special measures included but are limited to the following, and these would be, for example, for stadium rimway north of Centennial Drive. For example, missing bollards along the stadium side of the road shall be replaced and maintained. Wayfinding signage is going to be installed. Painted pedestrian markings and rumble strips shall be installed, and this is to provide cohesive walkway from the existing stadium rimway sidewalk and staircases from the stadium garage to and across the stadium rimway Centennial Drive intersection. Similarly, improvements have been included in this mitigation for stadium rimway Canyon Road, which is south of Centennial Drive, and stadium rimway Centennial Drive intersection. With this mitigation measure, this is a less than significant impact after mitigation. Moving on to the next impact, which is vehicle miles traveled. The proposed project could conflict or be inconsistent with CEQA guidelines, and this is a potentially significant impact. There are no feasible mitigation measures that were identified. This would be a significant and unavoidable impact. However, this impact finding is a conservative finding. Given that the proposed project is located in a transit priority area and includes game day TDM measures, transportation design measures that would be implemented to potentially reduce automobile congestion, increase pedestrian safety and bicycle use, and encourage transit. However, the travel mode survey that the campus did for this project indicated that 98% of the spectators drive to the campus to the games, and that the travel mode survey, what it highlights is that the TDM measures that we have included as part of this project cannot still be precisely assessed for the reduction in trip generation. So for this reason, we have conservatively determined that the impact be significant and unavoidable. The increase in spectators during typical events would occur up to 25 games during the competitive spring season. So if daily vehicle trips were annualized, the project in total would So if ta- daily vehicle trips were annualized, the project in total would actually meet the small project screening threshold. And that in this way, it would be screened out from further vehicle miles traveled analysis. Because V M T is really a metric that is based on the O P R technical advisory. And it's really a transportation metric that's associated with greenhouse gas emissions. However, we have considered this to be a um to be a significant and unavoidable impact. Again, there are no feasible mitigation measures to reduce the number of spectators for typical events. Without either reducing the overall attendance or restricting ticket sales to lower the aver- average number of spectators per year. This reduction in attendance is not feasible to implement. As a facility with a nu- with a minimum number of fifteen hundred seats is required. To host a postseason N C A woman softball game or tournament, which is one of the underlying project objectives. And therefore, the V M T impact associated with typical events would remain significant and unavoidable. Moving on to geometric design hazards, emergency access, both these impacts would be a less than significant impact. The cumulative transportation impact for vehicle mile travels would also be a significant and avoidable impact. And similarly, there are no physical feasible mitigation me- measures that were identified. So coming to wildfire. Based on all the wildfire impacts, including the cumulative wildfire impacts, this would be a less than significant impact. Um a wildfire protection plan was developed for this project. And it is in appendix C as well as a fire evacuation analysis was prepared in appendix H. And this helps inform the analysis for this section. So in the draft E I R, there is a chapter that says other sequoquas considerations and in that it. The the idea is to provide what are the impacts that are found to be not significant and what are the significant and avoidable impacts? So impacts that were found not to be significant are in the initial study, but also have been detailed out in the other sequoquas considerations chapter. In terms of significant and avoidable impacts, as I mentioned, to summarize noise. Temporary construction noise is one significant and avoidable impact. And transportation of the vehicle miles traveled. Is a conservative impact determined as significant and avoidable impact as well as cumulative transportation impact for vehicle miles travel. For go growth inducing impact, the project would not increase student enrollment. Or require the hiring of campus staff or faculty. So direct and indirect growth inducing effects associated with the project are not a significant impact. Statement of overriding considerations. In sequo- sequo, it requires that the decision making agency, in this case, U C Berkeley. To and you'll see to balance as applicable the economic, legal, social, technological, all other benefits. Including region wide or statewide environmental benefits of a project. Against its unavoidable environmental risks when determining to approve a project. So if the specific. Benefits of a proposed project outweigh the unavoidable adverse environmental effects. The adverse environmental effect may be considered acceptable. The regions or the regions designated may approve the project with the known significant. And unavoidable impacts by issuing a statement of overriding constra- considerations. That I did I'd really identifies how the benefits of the project outweighs the potential adverse environmental effects. The statement of overriding considerations would be included in the record of project approval. And moving on to alternatives to the proposed project. So in this, the the campus has identified numerous alternatives. There are some that were rejected, and so first I'm going to talk about those, and then I'm going to talk about those that were considered. So the university considered the following alternatives, which were rejected for further consideration. One of them was the existing project site with a different or orientation. In this case, the during the planning and the design of the project, which as I mentioned, had started in twenty eighteen. U C Berkeley considered a a different orientation. With this orientation, the buildings, the bleacher and the home base. All were going to be located along Centennial Drive on the north. And the facility would be facing towards the south and towards the panoramic hill neighborhood. This alternative included all the project components similar to the current proposed project. Given that this orientation of this alter of this. Alternative towards the adjacent residential neighborhood would actually increase noise and lighting impacts. As compared to the current pro- project, this alternative was eliminated. The campus also looked at many other sighting alternatives. Um the first was Richmond Field Station. This site is approximately seven point five miles away from the main campus park. It's not accessible. As well from the main campus via transit shuttle and does not have proximity to existing parking lots or garages. This sighting alternative would not meet the project objective to place the softball field close enough. To provide student athletes with walkable access to campus academic and athletic resources. And so this this um this sighting was eliminated. Next is Evans Diamond, which is actually within the campus park. This was determined not to be a viable sighting alternative for multiple reasons. One, softball and baseball programs require different field dimensions. And therefore, the field is not appropriately sized to serve the I A women's softball program. More importantly, having the women play on the men's baseball field would put the university in violation of Title Nine requirements. And it would not conform to the university's agreement with U S Department of Education Office for Civil Rights. Therefore, this sighting alternative would not meet the project's fundamental purpose. To provide an equitable facility for women's softball in order to ensure compliance with Title Nine. Downtown Berkeley. No sites were large enough to accommodate a softball field with the dimensions that are required for N C A. The athletic quadrant, which is within the campus park and it's located in the northwest area of the campus park. Again, there's no sufficient land available within this area to accommodate. A softball field, its associated improvements such as team rooms, lounges and coaches room. That are required to provide equitable facilities and compliance with Title Nine. The north field is also within the campus park and is currently planned for a new clean energy thermal plant. Planning and analysis has already been completed to identify all infrastructure improvements. That's required in order to connect the new plant to the adjacent campus buildings. The new thermal pan- plant is required to be within the campus park. So. The campus ultimately. Confirmed four alternatives that were selected for comparative analysis in this E I R. First alternative is a no project alternative. In this alternative, the project does not proceed forward under this alternative, the existing softball field would remain on the site. And continue to be used as under existing conditions. Alternative two is a reduced project alternative. And in this, it consists of the renovation of the existing softball field with all the project components. That this pro- proposed project has, with the exception that the seating capacity would be reduced. As compared to the existing conditions and the proposed project. Alternative three is no games after dark alternative. This is a proposed project with the exception that no games after dark would be allowed. And therefore, no field, no new field lighting would be provided and the use of existing temporary field lighting would be eliminated. And finally, the alternative four is a comprehensive project alternative located at University Village Albany. This alternative four consists of the development of the proposed project at Albany on the site of an existing softball field. Alternative four would include all the proposed project components. With the exception of a wildfire protection plan as a site is located outside of a very high fire hazard severity zone. The. The alternative as the analysis assumes that all applicable mitigation measures that were recommended for the project would also apply. To any potentially significant environmental impacts for each altern- alternative, except for the no project alternative. And finally, this is a table um of the alternatives. And it shows the ability of the alternatives to meet the project objectives. Sequa guidelines also say that that requires that an environmentally superior alternative be selected. And the reasons for a select for such a selection be disclosed. Alternative two, which is the reduced project alternative, would have been the greatest number of reduced impacts that would reduce but not avoid. The significant unavoidable temporary construction noise impact of the project. It would have avoided the significant unavoidable V M T impact. However, alternative two would not comply with N C A standards, which is seating for fifteen hundred spectators. And would not meet the project's fundamental purpose to provide an equitable facility. For the women's softball in order to ensure compliance with Title Nine and would not meet a number of other project objectives. As you can see in this table. Um alternative one, two, three and four show how there are many. Um project objectives that are not met, including the alternative four, which does not meet. Many of the objectives that are the the underlying objectives for this project. And with this, I conclude the the draft E I R disclosing information about the project and the the information about the draft E I R. As well as the information about the project. And we're going to move to comments. This leads us to the concluding part of the hearing. And I want to remind you all that the comments must be received by five P M on January twenty nine. Please email written comments to planning@berkeley.edu. Use the subject line Cal softball field renovation project E I R. You may also send written comments via mail to U C Berkeley Physical and Environmental Planning. Attention, Shadha Navli Patel, Senior Planner, and this address two hundred A and E building. And thank you all for joining us here. And I'm gonna move it to Kyle, who will now um read the public comments. And I'm gonna stop share.
Thanks, Shraddha. So tonight, there is a limit of two minutes for all public comments received. And speakers may not give some or all of their allotted time to other people. While there is a two minute time limit for comments received tonight. Please remember that there is no limit to the length of written comments. That can be submitted to us by email or U S mail by the deadline of January twenty nine, twenty twenty four at five o'clock P M. Please also remember that a public hearing is not a question and answer session. All comments received tonight. Will be collected, considered and responded to in writing in the final environmental impact report. And now, if you would like to give public comment on the draft E I R for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project. I invite you to please raise your hand in the Zoom app. If you are participating by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When I call your name or the last three digits of your phone number. I will then unmute your microphone and a two minute timer will start when you begin to speak. When your two minutes have elapsed, I will mute you and call on the next speaker with their hand raised. Alright, so now please, if you would like to give comments, please raise your hand. So please, if anybody uh would like to give comments, please reuse the raise hand feature in the Zoom app. Or if you are participating by phone, please press star nine to let me know that you would like to give a comment. So currently, I do not have anybody that is raising their hand again, making a call for anybody that is participating tonight. If you would like to give comments on the draft E I R, please raise your hand. Okay, at this time, we still do not have anybody that is raising their hand. I'm gonna still give us another minute or two to see if anybody would like to raise their hand and give a comment. Uh so just to everyone, uh please hold on for a little bit. And again, if you would like to raise your hand to let us know that you would like to give a comment. Or if you are participating by phone, please press star nine to let me know. Okay, making a first call for comments again. I'll give another minute to make a second call. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Making a second call. Anyone that would like to give a public comment, please raise your hand or press star nine if you are participating by phone. And making a final call for anyone that would like to give a public comment on the draft E I R for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project. Please raise your hand to let me know that you would like to speak. Okay, we do not have anybody that has asked to give a public comment. So that will conclude today's public hearing to provide comments on the draft E I R for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project. In addition to anybody that wanted to leave a comment tonight. I would like to remind everyone that all comments received by the deadline in the notice of availability. Will become part of the public record and responded to in writing in the final E I R. The deadline to submit comments is January twenty nine, twenty twenty four at five o'clock P M. And again, comments can be submitted to us in writing by emailing planning@berkeley.edu. Or by U S mail to the address that Shraddha provided during tonight's presentation. There is no limit to the length of written comments that can be submitted to us by email or U S mail. However, they must be received by the January twenty nine, five o'clock P M deadline. Please remember that all comments received before the deadline will become part of the public record. And responded to in writing in the final E I R. This concludes the public hearing for the proposed Cal softball field renovation project. On behalf of all of us at U C Berkeley and Capital Strategies, I thank you very much for joining us this evening. And thank you for any comments that you will send to us in writing. We hope that you will enjoy the rest of your evening.